And Emmaus, which is a brand-new church on the west side. And so in the course of that conversation, we had those five churches like eight to 10 months ago. And then we narrowed it down. We narrowed down not only what the congregation might be, but also what our relationship might be. Quite frankly, we were unwilling as a congregation just to throw money at another congregation and prop it up. And we had tried over the years to send our help, like send Mark over to help with music and send me to speak with the pastor on leadership and so on. And it has a very limited impact. And so we said, if we're going to do this partnership, whatever it may look like, we'd like to wrap that into our ministry. We'd like to be able to transfer our spirit, our DNA, our vitality, our boldness, and into a new congregation. And so with some of those criteria, then it came down to really one: family of faith. And I'll get into a moment what the criteria were. So about five or six months ago, we narrowed it down to this one congregation: family of faith. I spoke to our church council about what that relationship would look like, and I talked to their congregation about what the relationship would look like. In March of this year, we put together a transition team. People from both Christ and family of faith that would put together a document outlining to 10 to 12 different areas that needed special focus. Who was on that transition team? Tim Smith and Greg and Jeff and Kendra. I think we had six from our congregation and maybe four or five from theirs. Now, that document is about 12 pages long. What I've done here with this single sheet is truncate it down for our conversation today. So from March to June, this transition team put together the document. In June, we presented the document both to their council and our council. And in June, both councils approved it. Now be very clear, what they approved was not the merger. They can't do that. Only a congregation can do that. What they approved was the vision. What they approved was going forward with the town meeting and the congregational vote. That's all they could approve at that time. So June was the approval, July is the town meeting, and then July 30th will be their vote to merge, and then August 13 will be our vote. So that's going to be the process. So what I want to do here is walk through this page, the two pages, front and back. The vision: several campuses that are united in identity and varied in expression. We'd like to have the one church and several expressions. We are not looking to do a franchise model that many of the mega-churches in Charlotte and across the country are doing, that each one look and taste and smell the same with the same sermon on Sunday morning. We're not looking at that. We're looking at a variety of expressions. An example right now is Christ South. From the very beginning of Christ South, that was always, always, always going to be an ongoing ministry of Christ Lutheran. That is, we were not thinking about three, five, 10 years from now and spin them off to an independent congregation. And yet, their expression is very different than on Providence Road. And even on Providence Road, if you go to all three services, each one has a very different expression. So we'd like to repeat that, in which Matt is a member of our congregation, the finances are the same, the membership is the same, but they have a different expression. Here's the problem on the background. The landscape for congregations has changed dramatically over the past generation, and the church, capital C, has been slow to respond. Mission starts have had a lackluster success. You know, our mission starts only between 15 and 20% actually succeed after three to five years. The biggest growing group of churches in the ELC right now are those that worship between 50 and 100 people. Not because they've gone from 25, 75, up to 100, it's because they've gone from 100, 150, 150. They're dropping in size. And the Senate is really at a loss. What can we do? We can put money towards them, we can send some coaches, but what more can we do? And so these congregations are feeling very isolated, and they're feeling like they're in a death spiral. Family of Faith, for instance. They used to be downtown Concord. They moved out to where the growth was and became Family of Faith in 1985. At that time, they worshipped 125 people, a vibrant congregation. And yet, there were some mismatches with pastors, some vacancies that weren't filled, some interims who didn't do anything, some impropriety going on. And pretty soon today, they're in a death spiral, and they're down to 25 to 30 at worship. They've been screaming for years. But the Senate is really not a position to help, in any tangible way. So that's why a year ago, the Senate came and said, can we figure out how to do this as partners? So we've got a "both and" model, not a franchise, but a "both and." That is, one congregation, different expressions. I don't know what their worship is going to look like up there, neither do they, but it's evolving even as we speak. Common branding: we're going to be Christ Lutheran churches. We're going to have some similar look, but they're going to be changing just enough to be different. Centralized membership: this is going to be one membership in our computer bank. When they vote on July 30th, they're voting to dissolve as a congregation. Family of Faith will no longer exist. That membership will come to our membership. Now, they've got about 100 people on their rolls right now. Because Family of Faith no longer will exist at that point, you have to opt in to be a member of Christ Lutheran. See how it's different? Some would just bring everybody in, you'd have to opt out. No, if you're going to be in, you have to opt in to be. So there might be only 70 or 80 who might actually opt in. And in our software, we have the ability to be able to designate people: Christ Providence, Christ South, Christ Concord. So not everybody gets everybody's email blast. Not everybody needs to know when the Clara Sullivan Circle is going to be meeting, because we don't want to overwhelm people. But each pastor of each campus will be responsible for that flock. Centralized financing: it will all go into Christ Lutheran. When they vote on July 30th and they vote to dissolve their congregation, all of their assets and their budget will be coming over to Christ Lutheran. They've got four acres, they've got a really nice sanctuary and an adjacent fellowship hall, and it's all paid for. They're debt-free. They've got a membership right now of $120,000. But not all of that is from offering. About $55,000 is from offering of the 120. There's a $17,000, $18,000 that's coming from their savings. And the rest of it is coming from the grants from the Senate and from North Carolina. I mean, church-wide and from North Carolina Senate. And that's for three more years. And each year, it's going to go down just a little bit. So the Senate and the church-wide has given them three years, funding for three years to be able to continue on. All of that will be transferred over to us. For the first year, it will really not be any financial impact to Christ Lutheran because of all this external funding, unless we put a lot more money into programmatic staff, which we're looking at right now. Centralized financing, but every pastor of every campus will be in charge of stewardship awareness and fundraising within that particular campus. And Pastor Matt and myself and Pastor Paul, who's the pastor at Family of Faith, we're right now going through a stewardship consultant together to be able to unify the campuses together into one. One staff: when we vote on this, we also had to vote on having Pastor Paul Meyer as a new pastor of Christ Lutheran Church, serving that campus. And the staff here will be at the disposal of the staff up there, really working primarily on coaching and training and encouragement. Right now, they don't have much for staff. They've got Pastor Paul, they've got a part-time piano player, like about 10 hours a week, and they've got a part-time office administrator, about, is it 15? 10 hours a week. And our personnel committee is looking at reconfiguring their needs. They're probably going to need a programmatic person. That's going to be 10, 15, 20 hours a week, right around there. They're going to need a musician that's going to be able to lead the band and organize all the musical side, which would be about a 15-hour week. So we're not talking about huge outlays of money, but important positions to have there. And in addition, we're going to have our staff be there to be able to coach and guide. Let's go on. One leadership team, individual decision-making, common goal, one council. We're still going to have 12 people on our church council, but we're going to look to have representation from all of our campuses. For instance, Jeff Maybaum right now is the church council president, and he worships primarily at Christ South. Probably beginning January of the annual meeting, we'll probably have somebody on the ballot from Christ Concord as this goes through. And yet, each campus will have its own discernment team. Christ South has about six to eight people that work directly with Pastor Matt to help implement and design and dream the vision that's for that campus. These are not elected individuals. These are handpicked people with the gift of leadership, vision, and coordination. And Pastor Matt would have to do that, Pastor Paul would have to do that up in Christ Concord. So here's the goal. The goal is if we can figure out how to do this, that is, take a struggling congregation, infuse it with a place like Christ Lutheran, we can replicate that across the Senate and across the country. Not with Christ Lutheran having 100 campuses eventually, that's not the goal. But we can teach other medium and large-size congregations to do just this. And I think it's possible, because, take a look at the criteria there. I've been in conversation with four other pastors in the country that are doing exactly this. One in North Dakota, one in Denver, one in Chicago, and one in Virginia. They have merged with struggling smaller congregations to be able to help the transformation, and it's going extremely well. But in my conversation with them, there were four criteria by which to say, is this a good congregation to work with? Remember, we had five we started with, and only one fit all four criteria. First of all, a congregation that was situated in an area of growth. It can't be in rural hall in North Carolina or some, it can't be a place, it's got to be a place of growth. And Family of Faith is on Pitt School Road, which is right between, which is right between the Speedway and Concord Mills Shopping Center. It's a busy, growing, dynamic area. Number two, there had to be a vacancy or a brand-new pastor. That is, we couldn't work with somebody who'd been there for 10 years and then say, come and change the culture. That person is the culture. So we needed somebody that was either vacant or brand-new. And Pastor Paul, who just walked in here down from Concord, raise your hand, Paul. Paul came on Easter for the first time. And right when he landed, we were in conversation with him about this partnership, and he's been on board from the very beginning. Number three, there needs to be a willingness to enter into this agreement. That is, I shouldn't have to go in there and argue a case and convince them to do this. So earlier this year, when I pitched this idea to our council and to Family of Faith Council, I got done, and there was a little bit of awkward silence for a second. And you're never sure how to interpret that kind of silence. And then Sue, right here, is with Paul, she said, we've been waiting for this for three years. We've been asking the Senate and looking for support. We didn't know exactly what we needed, but we needed something different: resources and a vision that was new. We're all in, we've been looking for this for three years. So there's a strong willingness. The fourth one's very important: they have to be willing to pay the price. And what I mean by that is that every congregation wants to grow. Every congregation wants new members, but they usually, not directly, but they usually communicate by saying, as long as you come in and like our worship service, as long as you come in and like our education, as you come in and like me, then we'll let you join. The price is, we're going to do church not that's pleasing to us, but it's pleasing for the one who's not here. That's a huge price, number one. Number two, when they vote, it's a huge price. They're voting to dissolve and transfer all their assets over here. That's huge. You know, when we're talking about what Family of Faith is voting on and what Christ Lutheran is voting on, wow, they're voting on a whole lot more. When I met with their council, they said, we know what Christ Lutheran is bringing to the table. I mean, all the resources and energy and experience and all this kind of stuff, what in the world are we bringing to the table? I said, wow, first of all, that bold faithfulness to hand over everything and to begin anew. And if we were going to start a congregation up in Concord, we'd have to put a million dollars in for land and building and everything else. They're already providing all that. They're making a big risk. Below are the transition teams there. So who's on the transition team? Raise your hand, we said about that here, we've got some more over here as well. Who's on church council who's been a part of this conversation for a year? Got some back here as well. Terminology: now, the terminology is really inside speak. Up and down here in Charlotte, we're probably going to always be known as Christ Lutheran Church here. And we're not going to compete with Christ Church Episcopal, right? They're around Providence as well. This is mostly internal speak. When we talk about Christ Lutheran, we're going to be talking about the whole ministry. And do we have it up there from the very top where it says Christ? Where it said, "Christ Lutheran churches"? We've been working with a consultant who only works with churches. We said, what is it, Christ Lutheran Church? Three campuses or Christ Lutheran churches? And he said, you know, you and I know that the word church can be singular or plural, corporate or individual, but the rest of the world doesn't know that. If you want to be clear, you say, "Christ Lutheran churches." And then underneath it, you've got the three different campuses. And so you click one of those three, and you go to Christ Providence, Christ South, or Christ Concord. Similar look, unique expression. So we've got the terminology, Christ Lutheran's everything, Christ South, we know that, Christ Concord, we gave them their option, what do you want to be known as? And they chose Christ Concord. And then here, Christ Providence. So let me go through the 12 different things, this is fairly quick, the 12 things that the transition team identified. Number one, synatical steps for merger. We don't have to make this up. The Senate has provided a very specific step-by-step process in which one church dissolves or merges into another. It is constitutional, it is perfunctory, it is pretty straightforward, and we're following that by the book. And the Senate is walking with us this whole time. Governance: one congregation. Representation: discernment teams. Membership: I mentioned that, we all go to one membership, our software can handle it, and designate which campus. But when we have congregational events like Big Daddy Weave or Vacation Bible School, we may, we throw that out to everybody, but then we do specific mailings as well. Finances: the finances will be all consolidated here, much like Christ South again. Christ South is a ministry of the church, much like family ministry and music ministry and so on. And we give them a budget to work with. Now, we're going to track everything internally. We're going to know how much the utilities are at Christ Concord, what the expense are for repairs, and what the income will be and is. We'll be tracking that all along. But it's going to be one membership and one finances. Social media and branding: I just showed this up here. This is what Lori Carter has been working on, it's kind of a prototype that she and Marcy Keller have been working on. So one congregation, three locations, you go to, you want to click one and see what happens here? All the staff right there, and you can meet the pastors, scrolling across there. Different churches, here's pictures of inside over at Family of Faith. It's a really nice, how many do you seat over there, about 125? About 125 chairs. And they can move it whichever direction they may want to go. So social media and branding, so we're looking into that website, we'll be able to have all three, and they'll link back and forth. Legal and synatical considerations: it's a simple majority vote, a simple majority vote to merge. For us, our constitution says, a quorum, you have to be present. And a quorum is anyone who shows up to a properly-called congregational meeting. 10 people or 1,000 people, it has to be properly called, two-week notice to the congregation. And for your constitution, what does it say? Is that a percentage?
It's 25%.
Got it? Yeah. So it's a formula that's based on a percentage. We did that for a while, and it was hard to hit the quorum, so we just got rid of Staffing: I mentioned staffing before, Paul and two other part-time people there, and we're working with the personnel committee to take a look at programmatic and a musical person up there. But Paul will be a pastor of Christ Lutheran Church, so we're going to have to call him when we have our meeting. Vision-setting and goal review: when I went to their council and spoke, one question, very good question, said, does this mean your council is going to tell us what to do? I said, I wouldn't look at it that way. I would look at that our council is going to ask Pastor Paul and the discernment team, what are your goals for this year? And then our council will hold that accountable. And not just accountable, but we're going to send the bulk of our leadership team to help them succeed with it. We're going to send Pastor Matt to talk about evangelical outreach into the community. I'll be talking about leadership and preaching. Melody will do family ministry, and Drew will do small group and adult education. They've got the full use of our leadership team to be able to bring about those goals and accomplishments. So it's not telling you what to do, it's asking you, what are your goals, and helping you to achieve them. And then finally, technology. There's a lot of technology that we need to do up there, some new computers, Wi-Fi, projector, screen for their new worship expression. That's about as far as I want to go, and I'm going to open this up for questions, and we have several people that can help field them. Oops, we got a mic right here.
I could see where Family of Faith would love to have us be a part of. I think it's really an idea. No one wants to see a church dissolve. When it comes to staffing, what kind of pressure is that putting on the staff here? That's what I'm concerned about. You're saying that you're opening up and you're going to be available for Carshion and Pastor Drew, but you have a lot to do here and as we grow. I mean, you have the experience and everything.
The model that's working out really well so far is with Christ South. So I'm working directly with Pastor Matt. Thankfully, he doesn't need a whole lot of hand-holding, do you? You can run, no, you do not. And helping him identify what those visions are. Melody is helping with family ministry and children and youth program. She's not doing it. We've got Jeff Taylor down there who's doing the hands-on. In the same way, we're going to have a programmatic person there that will report ultimately both to Pastor Paul, but also to Melody, and to be able to, more of a coaching situation than a doing situation. And then Mark will be working with a musician to help with resources and such, but he won't be up there and playing piano. So it's mostly in coaching rather than doing.
I understand how the voting will work for these first congregational meetings to decide on the merger. But beyond that, I'm thinking like how in the Senate, every state has the same representation, but in the House of Representatives, you have more for more populous. And I'm wondering if thought has been given to future congregational meetings, because if it's just like one member, one vote, they might feel like they're the redheaded stepchild that never has enough votes to make a difference.
Yep. So there's two answers to that, Rebecca. The first one is that we'll have an annual meeting and would certainly invite people from South and Concord to be a part of that, to come here. That might be an evening thing, where more people can attend rather than right after worship where they're already booked. So we may have to do that differently, maybe have a dinner or some celebration. The second thing, as the technology improves, we're going to be able to have on-screen simultaneously people from South and Concord and have a conversation back and forth and have that vote with a convener at all places. So we'll be able to try to do that. Do we have that capability yet?
We got it, Matt.
All right, we got it. I've been told we've got it. What else you got?
I'm concerned with just starting Christ South and Matt being so successful, how much of his time will be taken away from Christ South and the endeavor that he has going on there with Christ Concord?
How much will Matt's? You got a booming voice, can you cover that?
Sure. Yeah, that's a great question. It's not the first time I've heard that. But this is the best part, this is the best part about having a staff like we do and having a church like we do, is that it's all for one. You know, that we're going to put in time and energy to make sure that all those things... I've never been in a place where I've seen a staff work that way so well. That Pastor Tenney will drop things that he's doing on occasion to make sure that I've got what I need. And that ends up working in such a way that I don't have worries about that. I'll give time as time is needed to make sure that that happens, but also the more that I help in those other areas gives our great people at Christ South an opportunity to pitch in even more and take on some new things. And then all of a sudden, they learn new skills, and I don't have to keep doing the pipe and drape, you know? They can do it. I walk in on Sunday mornings and it's all set up, you know, they get it figured out. So I think it's a good team environment.
They are going to give up their assets, is what we've been, you've discussed. So does that mean that they will be signing the deed of their property over to us?
Yes.
Okay, they are giving up a lot then. They are giving up a lot then.
Yeah, Martha? You just got one of these microphones?
I've got the one over there in case anybody has a question.
Oh, all right.
At Christ South, where a lot of us are going over and making that another place to worship. So, what is the expectation of Christ South people?
That's a good T.O., right there. We, you know, we helped Christ South start with a good group of people. Right now, about one-third, they're worshiping about 130 people. About one-third are active members of Christ Lutheran. One-third are fringe people who have kind of wandered away, or they're sightseers from Christ Lutheran. And then about one-third are brand-new people. So, we found in our database for membership that we've got 72 people who are within driving distance of Family of Faith. That is 12 to 15 minutes. And I've had three or four emails to them to really encourage them and tell them about this, this new vision. And really want to encourage, if I can get 25 to 35 of that 72 to start worshiping there on a regular basis, to be our missionaries, that will help with critical mass, but also help infuse that place with the spirit of Christ Lutheran.
Scott, you know, Christ South is a little different than Concord in that...
Yeah, we know that because of math, isn't it? Yeah.
We've gone into a school. And so, if you think about this just from a business point of view, the exit strategy on Christ South from a business point of view is pretty easy because we have no facility. The exit strategy on Christ Concord is quite different. Yes, they're giving up a lot to transfer that property to us. But, you know, sometimes things may work out differently. What happens three or four years from now if this thing doesn't fly? And all of a sudden, what looks like an asset could be a lot better.
Good, good question. The transition team and the church council asked that very specific question, Ed. And the question was, "Should we put a prenup into this, into this relationship?" And we decided not to. The understanding about not going into a marriage, thinking about divorce in our mind. But the reality is this. We will know in three to five years. We've got funding from the Senate and the church-wide to sustain this for three years before we'd have to put any serious money into it if it wasn't going well. So, in three to five years, if this isn't going well, we will have another congregational vote to really see what needs to be done. If that means to pour more money into it? If that means to sell it to another congregation? Or to sell it to a developer? It's valuable land. We're not going to lose any money in the land. We're not paying taxes on the land. It is debt-free. So, if we're all looking at worst-case scenario, we sell the property and such, and we add that to the, to the ministries of Christ Lutheran. Would you agree with that, Susan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. We hope that's not where it's going.
Right.
We talked about that quite a bit with this whole prenup idea. We're all in. I think we're either all in or we're all out. It's, I don't think there's a middle ground, so.
Susan does everything over there. And so, she was very instrumental in helping us put this together as well.
Do they have a band?
Oh, tell them about your band here!
We worship God this morning. We had some bass, some guitar, some drums. Beautiful three-part harmony. And, and so, we're, this is our second Sunday, just playing with, with different music. So, we do have a band where, where, again, that music person, that part-time music person that we hired would, would bring in just that next level of passion and excitement into the music.
What was the worship like before?
Before, two weeks ago, we were, we have a pianist. We do traditional hymns. Everything's printed in the bulletin, traditional liturgy. And, and it's just sort of, sort of low-key and, and, you know, with such a small group, it's intimate.
Where'd you get your green collar? I've never seen one green before.
Oh, this?
Yeah.
My collar's white, but...
Yeah, my collar's white.
Well, actually, I was given this as a gift, so.
Yeah?
But it's liturgical.
It's liturgical, it's the green season, isn't it?
It's the season after Pentecost, that's right. So, we're worshiping official.
It was, yes. But, but again, we're, we, right, next week, we'll go back to, to traditional-style worship and, and, and just sort of sit there and, and we'll worship and we'll wait and we'll pray. And then when, when the congregation votes to resurrect as Christ Concord or continue as Family of Faith, that will, that will influence how we worship into the future. But, but I'm, I'm totally confident in the, in the spirit working through this that, that we are going to be born again as a new congregation with a new excitement, a new vision, a new way of being Christ in the community up there.
Thank you. Mike?
From the, those that will likely vote and, yes, we're all in at, in the Concord location, what's, what's the demographic makeup of those that, that are interested? I mean, it's going to take a lot of energy, financial commitment. And I'm just curious, what is the starting point with those that are saying yes in Concord? Or Concord, I'll say it right, if I'm going to say it. I speak all kinds of things. Anyway, so, that, just curiosity about the demographics of those that are ready to, to jump forward and, and move with you.
Our demographics basically, about 30 to 50% are 65 and over. Probably 15, 20% are, are, I'm going to say 25 to, to 50.
Are you talking about the congregation or the community?
I'm talking about active worshiping members.
Active worship.
So, the demographic that you, are you talking about within the congregation or, or the...
We're starting with the second group.
Right. So, yes, so... Well, we're, there's, there's excitement around this. So, the redevelopment team, which is my group of core leaders, as well as the council, and, and most of the people that I talk with, they are really excited about, about doing a new thing. And again, we'll have this meeting this evening at, at Family of Faith. And we'll discuss the, the cost piece that Pastor Scott was talking about. That there, we are going to be reborn. We are going to no longer be what we were. And so, so that discussion will happen. But I'm pretty confident that, that folks are going to be willing and they understand that that's part of the deal.
So, when I first heard that rumors of a third campus, I was like, "Oh, brother, not again." But as, as you're...
You mean that in a good way, right?
Well, but as, as I was thinking about it more and read through your, your letter about it and all of this, maybe it's just the sermon series lately, but I'm, I'm thinking about how Paul was evangelizing and going from place to place and spreading the message and how a church can't just focus in on itself. I think it's a good idea. I think it's good.
Thank you. And one more addition to that. Whenever Paul went into, did his missionary journeys, he always started with the synagogues. He always started with the, the group that's already part of that Jewish community becoming Christian. And I think this is one more strategy that follows Paul. You start where they already are rather than starting with whoever else is out there.
This is a question for Pastor Paul. I mean, on the face of it, it looks very, very easy. We have a lot of things in abundance. Family of Faith does not, so we just share and we're all going to be a happy family. But I'm sure it's not that easy from the Concord's perspective. So, my question is to Pastor Paul, come September 1, what are you looking forward to, forward to doing first with the shared blessings of Christ Lutheran overall that you cannot be doing now? And what, yeah, makes the biggest difference, difference for you?
Yeah, so, the, the thing that I'm looking forward to most is that first, we call it a community handshake. That first big opportunity to, to put up signs and put up banners and put up bouncy houses, whatever. To, to let the folks in the neighborhood know that something new is going on here. So, that, that excitement, that initial step out into the community to say, "Hey, look at us over here. We have this new thing going on." So, for me, that's the most exciting part is, is engaging the community just in different ways, you know? Who knows, water balloon fights, free barbecue, whatever. Just to say hi. And to, and to get folks to say, "Oh, that guy's a pretty nice guy." Or, "Oh, I hate his guts. What am I going to do there?" Whatever they say, they're going to know that Christ Concord is there. And for me, that's the exciting part.
There's something strategic about the timing. I know summertime is a hard time to have town meetings and congregational votes. I got a little bit of pushback from that. But we want to launch this September 1 when people are coming back to Sunday School, back to school. Either do it then or strategically as we did Christ South in January, the top of the year. And we didn't want to wait till January for a start.
I would like to know a little bit more about Pastor Paul. What his experiences are, his past experiences, leadership and so forth.
Okay.
All right.
Get your little background, Paul. Come on up here.
I will, okay. So, my name is Paul Myers. I graduated seminary in May of 2016. So, this is my first call as a pastor. I'm also a certified redeveloper. So, not only is this my first call as a pastor, it's my first call as a redevelopment pastor, which is really terrifying, just so you know. I'm married. I have, I have two wonderful kids grown, living in Ohio. My wife and my dog live with me here. And before this, I fixed copy machines for 35 years, right out of high school. And, and it's a different life. So, you get up in the morning as a copier guy and you go out, you drive office-to-office, fix the machine. You say hi to folks, you know, as, as a politeness thing. And then you get to work and you get out. Being a pastor is way different. Because I spent my entire life talking and, and growing relationships instead of just saying hi and, and hitting the door. So, for me, this is, this is an exciting new way of living. And so, what I bring, I think, to, to this new vocation that God's called me to is, is a level of systems analysis. So, so when you fix a copier, you walk in, you have to know how it works. You have to know what's not working. And then you can, you can fix it. You have to be able to analyze those things. So, from a systems perspective, I, I have the ability to troubleshoot. Say, "Well, this isn't working. Why isn't it working?" Because this is the way it's supposed to work and it's not happening. So, so for me, that's the experience that I bring in from my former life is just the ability to say, "What is it that's, that's not working and how can we make that happen?"
Tell us a little bit about the mission development certification. You know, you think about some, some professions, you know, M.D. You go an extra couple of years to do surgery or specialize in pediatrics. You did your seminary training that all pastors do, but what was this additional one?
Well, the additional one was less training and more assessment. So, so the church-wide directors for evangelical mission talk to certain candidates who they think might fit the mold, the model of a redeveloper or a developer. And they, there's a personality profile you go through, psychological testing. And they ask you questions about, "When in your life have you done a new thing? When have you organized this, this new thing? Or when have you shown this skill set?" And, and so, it's, it's a certification in that I have exhibited the skill set that, that the ELCA thinks fits well with the redevelopment model.
And this is the same thing that Pastor Matt went through?
Exactly. Only he did it a long time ago.
Long time.
Are you from North Carolina?
I am from Ohio, born and raised, yeah. And I am so...
All right, we're out.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to go O.H. on you, don't worry. But I will go Steelers on you if you're not careful. It's a town called Bucyrus. You might know a guy named Tenny Shively. He's, he's from Bucyrus, Ohio. Matter of fact, the, the amazing crazy thing, his father and my father-in-law were coworkers at the same lumber mill. And, and Tenny used to work with my father-in-law in the summertime.
Ed, you got another one? Just belt it out.
You know, I grew up in Concord.
It's what?
I can tell you a story later about, about, just see me after church outside, I'll tell you. But, but you know, there, there are, there are several, you know, St. James Lutheran in Concord, I think Calvary in Concord. What's been the connection with those churches and, and Family of Faith and this whole, whole issue? I guess I'll just ask, you know, why aren't the churches in Concord stepping up and doing this? And I don't mean that in a negative way. I'm just trying to get things out.
Right, right. Yeah, I understand the question.
I think people have questions they have on their mind.
Sure. And honestly, I, I can't answer that question. Again, I've been here since Easter. So, so I've just now met the, the pastors from St. James and from Calvary and from Advent. So, so I know...
Yes, Ms.?
Sorry?
Do you have something to add about, have you had any relationships with these churches?
I haven't been there 20 years almost. I guess I can speak to that. So, in, in Concord and Cabarrus County, we do have a, what we call the Share House, which is an organization of, I don't even know how many kind of wains and waxes, but seven or eight or nine different Lutheran churches that are in Cabarrus County. There's a couple in Stanley County. And they do, we do collaborate on things like confirmation training. So that, like at our church, we had a confirmation class of one or maybe two. So, do five or six of those other churches have very small groups. We get them together and we do, we do those things. So, there have been some collaboration. As far as why, we actually, several years back, looked at, or there was some talk between, not St. James, Calvary, and any potential interest in a satellite campus. And, and we were told there was no interest there. So, that was explored at one point, but that's been several years ago. But, you know, as far as why, I don't really know the particulars on their side.
What are the congregational sizes for these other churches in that, in their backyard?
Do you know how large they are?
I have no idea. Bigger than us. We're the only one on the west side of Cabarrus County. So, Calvary and that and St. James are in the downtown area of Concord. They're pretty large congregations. And then there's a handful of other smallish or smaller or very small congregations out on the east side of the county.
Work with us.
Well, yeah, I'm coming to, no, I'm not coming to steal you. Right. He, he asked, "What, what are we doing to increase membership?" So, part of my job as a redevelopment pastor is to, is to spend intentional time in the community. So, between 50 and 75% of my time is spent outside of the church. I have Tuesday and Thursday office hours morning, and that's it. The rest of the time, I'm in the community, meeting with community leaders, meeting with folks at coffee shops, just, just saying hi to everybody I can. And, and... And, and it's, you know, anytime you go to share the gospel, you, you don't walk out and say, hi, my name is Paul. Are you saved? You go out and you say, hi, my name is Paul. You want to have some lunch? You want, you want, let's go fishing. Meeting people, building relationships, sharing the love of God. And then there will come a point where somebody will say, why are you doing this? Why are you helping me? Why are you so nice? Whatever. That's the point at which the gospel can come out. So, but my job is to, is to build relationships and to invite, if, if you want to see what we're about, come on over, you know? Yeah, go ahead.
Terry?
You know, years ago, we had a, an idea to start a contemporary worship. And it wasn't accepted real graciously here. But we put together, we couldn't expect our pastor to do it all. So we put together not just a committee, but a committee of committees, where we made telephone calls to every surrounding household, inviting them to a, make an intentional invitation to come visit us this particular Sunday. I think it was very successful. But, you know, it took a big commitment from the congregation to, first to accept that, thought they want that type of service. And then we also had to make sure we didn't lose our core people here from the traditional service. And that was very, very difficult, but it was successful.
Calling in Christ, it was called.
Never forget it.
30 years ago, I think it was. I've been here 20.
Yeah, yeah, and so, so there, there is always, there's always risk and reward involved in changing a culture. And so, so what you're describing is people willing to take a risk in order for a potential reward from, for this new culture that you're trying to develop. And the same thing happens at, at any church that wants to change, to be reborn. I love the resurrection image for, for this, because, because assuming we vote to do this, we are voting to die as Family of Faith and to be reborn in the very same moment as Christ Concord. That is a baptismal thing. And that is a faith thing, and it's a courage thing. And, and I really think that, that helping people to recognize that image is what's going to make the Spirit work in this, and, and it's going to happen. So, thank you.
I don't want to keep you here all afternoon, but anything else pressing? Yeah?
If you look at this from a, an acquisition-type proposal, and you mentioned three to five years down the road, what is your vision as to what this is going to look like? Or how are we going to measure the success of this program?
I think it, I think the part of the, the metrics for that would be, how many, how many new people are being reached? Is financially, is it, is it a sustainable type of model that we have? And I think importantly, is it replicable? That is, I don't want to stop at three. I don't want 100, but I, I don't want to stop at three. I, I would imagine that if we figured this out, which is a completely different animal than Christ South, whether the fourth campus will be a struggling church or a new start, each one would have to be replicated to be a success. You got one more? All right.
Just a couple of things. One, we live in Kannapolis, so we drive past Concord on our way to church. So we're very excited about Christ Concord as a...
We got two! No, four! Five!
One's in college, so she's... My question is, when we joined Christ Lutheran, there was a new member class. Will that be offered for the existing members up there?
Oh.
That's a great question.
That's a good question. Yes, we should do that. That was, that was the, so far, the only question that we had not anticipated. That's a good one. Yeah, absolutely. Wow, to go up there and say, this is what it means to be a part of Christ Lutheran churches. Yeah, good. And that could be one of the first kickoffs for the continuum.
Yeah, it would be less about theology and it would be more about...
I gotta jot that one down.
What is, yeah, what does it mean to be part of, of a, of a community that's, that's thriving and, and reaching out, yeah. Thank you, that's awesome.
What's the chance, have you thought of that might happen that you cannibalize these other congregations and become successful off, off of the cannibalization of other Lutherans in the area?
I will say that that's always a possibility, but I do know that, that a couple of the other congregations have contemporary worship. And so if that's why people would come, I, I don't know that they would do that just because. But our focus is not going to be those who attend church. For me, my passion is for those who are, who are on the margins, who are forgotten, who are looked over. That's, that's my passion as a pastor. So my hope is that we will use our outreach, resources, skills, passion to, to talk to folks who know, who either don't attend church or no longer attend church, or have no clue in the world what God is about. And so if, I, I would never kick anybody out the door if they came from another church to say, I want to be in on that. But I also, I, I don't see myself as the kind of person who's going to, who's going to go and try to recruit from, from St. James or from Calvary or from Advent or from whatever. So our, our goal is to reach those who don't know what we know yet.
Cannibalism is no net growth for the kingdom of God. That's just shifting over. Good? Let's pray. Heavenly Father, you have placed in our hearts a bold vision and a trusting, grateful congregations. Pray, O Lord, that you would continue to guide this process to your ultimate will. For we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you have good worship this morning?
Yeah.